I'd like to call the order of the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, business meeting of Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that all members of the council are present as well as others in the audience. If you'll join me for a moment in silence, please. Please stand and join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody have any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Make a motion. Call in favor.
Aye.
Again, a motion to accept the certain agenda as written.
I'm in a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, time for a public comment period on items that are listed, not listed on this agenda. If anybody has anything, now's the time. Alright, let's move on to the zoning administration report.
Okay, this zoning activities for the period between September thirteenth and today, October tenth. There are currently sixty-one homes under construction or the beginning stages of lot clearing. During this period, we received seven single-family resident applications for homes. I've done one eighty-five Vista Ridge, three twelve Mary Jane Wayne in the ETJ, two on Woodland Circle, and three homes on Woodland Circle, and one home on Forest Lake Drive. There were three certificate block agencies issued for one home on Porterfield Lane, one on Grand Heinz Vista, and a home in the ETJ on Foxfire Road. There was one barn and one propane tank permit issued. That's it.
Have there been no applications?
No. Unless the police department has issued some.
Any questions? Okay, we'll go to department reports. First up, Councilperson Ray Rich is up with finance.
Okay, well, there are tax dollars coming in, which is good. Also, in our general fund, our total balance on hand is two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, forty-three dollars. And that's roughly a hundred thousand dollars more than we had at the end of last month. Of that, in reserves, we have one point, one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. In the water fund, we have a total of one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. And of that, we have reserved four hundred and seventy-one thousand and seventy-six dollars. Total interest earned on our capital trust investment this month is basically twelve point five thousand dollars. And again, year-to-date, we're looking at about thirty-six point six thousand dollars. And right now, I don't have anything else that I need to report on. I do have some stuff in the new business, but nothing, nothing here.
Do you have any questions down in finance? Such a great idea to move to that capital trust.
And we'll be moving more and more money into there as well.
When are we going to make a decision on how much we want to move?
Well, I was keeping one million in First Bank, and I want to move that down to about seven, seven fifty or seven hundred thousand, because we can move the money back and forth. I just didn't want to consume sharing with constantly transferring. But, I mean, we could, because it is a simple process, but we want to keep.
When do you want to do that?
I think as soon as she, once we've gotten these numbers and we have the fire department paid, because that's a rather large payment we need to make, we should be doing it within the next week.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for Jermaine? Next up, streets and parks, Councilwoman Nellis.
Okay, real quick, in case anybody's been wondering why they can't get in the bathrooms at the park, or, see, not at the park, the pool. When the internet went out at the village, it also knocked out the internet at the pool for the bathrooms and the doors. And they had, and it also knocked out the motherboard, which regulate the locks on the doors. So, they did come and replace the motherboard, obviously under warranty. And we, I've had Velocity out here this past week. He did what he needed to do at the pool, and he thinks it's, the problem is originating, because he couldn't get it up and running, he thinks it's on the tower. So, he's got, he's, he will not climb up the tower. He's getting somebody to come in and do that, to try and get that internet to connect to the pool house. And until we can do that, we cannot program the motherboard to regulate the door locks. So, they've remained locked. And I want them to remain locked, because if someone were to get in, and then, let's say, the internet went out again, they can't get out. And we can't get them out. So, I, I, yeah, I already got a call one time that they locked in, so it's not fun. But anyway, so, I'm working on that. And in addition to that, I've been speaking with Spectrum. And they did come out and do a site survey as to whether or not we could get Spectrum internet here. I should have some more information tomorrow regarding that. And whether, if we can get Spectrum, I've asked them to come and do a proposal for the council.
For all of it? Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
I'm anxious to hear that.
And, you know, price-wise, we kind of talked a little bit, not much, but it's not much more than we're paying now.
Well, if it's better service and if it's reliable, that's worth something.
So, I'll have more information probably at the work session on that.
Have we posted anything on the doors?
Yeah, Lisa is out of order. Yeah, I asked Lisa to print up one, out of order.
I don't want them to pick the wrong people, saying we're locking them on all purpose.
Oh, I've already let them know. Because I got emails or texts about it. Yeah, they, they have my number. It's much fun. Regarding the pool also, I mean, we're, and again, we can discuss this at the work session in terms of Plan B. Letting, getting out of the contract with USA Management, probably been absolutely horrible to deal with. And we need to give them at least thirty days' notice that we want out of contract. And what we're probably going to do, and we can come up with some ideas, but I did speak to one person who would be willing to manage the pool for us next summer. But I think we should put it out and get, you know, get applications for that position. And then we would just, you know, pay the kids.
And we have a, I didn't know we had a multi-year contract with the, okay.
And that was to lock in rates.
Right, I see, I see.
But, yeah, they've been absolutely horrible to work with.
They've been not responsive.
Oh, totally not responsive. Every time I said a need. I have, there's been an issue with one of the, the kids that I'm trying to get resolved for them. Let's see, I've emailed at least three times, called, messages, texted, left messages. And that's over the span of the month and have not received any response. And I never received a response.
Any penalty for getting out? So, I have to give them thirty days?
No.
No penalty?
No. And, and we have enough ammunition that if they did try to penalize us, believe me, I have enough ammunition to say, there's no way we'll continue.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, they've been horrible.
We've worked hard.
Yeah, we tried it. You know, the sad part is, I called their four references, and they had glowing references. So, I don't know if it's because we're too small or what, but, yeah, we got nothing from them.
Not too bad.
Yeah. Very, very, very disappointed in them. So, we'll be talking about that at the work session. I think that was it.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Questions?
Anybody?
Nope.
Okay, no questions? Okay, on to public safety, Councilwoman Nelson.
The fire department, the fire chief hasn't got back to me yet today as far as the monthly data. I know we had a fire on Deer Cross about a week ago.
Yeah.
A garage fire, minor damage, everything was pretty small.
Deer track.
Taken care of. The police department, ah, chief's shoes.
Deer track.
It was deer track, yeah.
Have you said deer question?
Well, that's cool.
Yep.
Deer song.
Little deer thing.
Dad kept me up all night.
For the police department, I'll pass out the numbers for the, the month from September tenth through October the tenth. You'll have to copy that in front of you. We also attended the Drug Free North County meeting at the courthouse, which was essentially just a fill-in the sin on keeping up with going after these grants for refills on Narcan and, and stuff to keep first responders supplied with, with the necessary steps for lifesaving measures.
Do those expire? Those, um?
You know, I think they do, but it's still, it's like, almost like aspirin, even after it's gone out, it's, it's still, you can still use it. But my opinion is if they're going to continue to give them those, we'll, we'll be taking it. Especially with the uptick, uptick of abuse. Today, the Gunders Highway Safety Grant Purchasing Process opened up. We went in and jumped online first thing this morning and picked ourselves up a new radar from our patrol car. We ordered twenty-five blood test kits. We ordered a, a new handheld alpha sensor for roadside use for DWI detection, as well as a new printer for, a new patrol car for next year. So, that'll save a little money on some equipment. Pulled the data from the speed signs on Woodland Circle. The, Donna gave you a copy of those, and I'll let you speak on those in more depth if you'd like. But just to kind of go and answer some, some questions about, that may come up about that. I did notice a little uptick in speeding on the westbound traffic heading out of the, the east side. So, coming back up the hill, it seemed like they're going a little faster than they are when they're coming down. Coming down, we had just, just under seven thousand vehicles for a thirty-day period travel that road. And it was a ninety-seven point eleven percent that were intolerance, which means thirty miles an hour or below the seven thousand vehicles. With a two point eight eight percent of vehicles that were above thirty mile an hour. And that could be thirty-one, thirty-two. It doesn't necessarily mean they were running fifty or sixty miles an hour. It just means that they were above thirty miles an hour. On the west outbound traffic, it was an eighty-six point seven six percent compliance. So, you know, we've been working in the police department side. I've got my guys out there at least three different times during the day. And we've been working Richmond Road as well for that, for that same reason. So, that's at least three different hours over the course of their shift work that they're to sit out in these trouble spots. We did move one of the devices from Woodland Circle there at the top of the hill and moved it over to South Shamrock Drive where there's some speed complaints coming down the hill. We also moved one of the speed devices on Richmond Road, kind of upwards Ridge Road a little bit there out of the curve, where, you know, people pop around, people trying to come out of the driveway. So, trying to do what we can toward new dealers, just try to slow some of these people down. Chris's charger, we had a call last week that it was ready, went and picked it up and made it about five miles down the road and had to take it back. I, I also didn't know if I was going to make it back alive. So, we're, we're back down a vehicle. Thankfully, we still have the Explorer hanging around. So, if you see Chris and our fire department officer doubled up, that's why we're back short of vehicle. So, hope to hear back something soon on that. By the time we get it back, we should have an all-new drive training at the, so. No surprise with the attacks on Israel, the big focus for us in the Jewish community has been the temple. You know, we're, we're the only ones that have a temple in this area. We've been in contact with the sheriff's office and as well as the Jewish congregation. And we've let them know that we're in the area, we're checking. They're calling us plenty to let us know anytime they see something suspicious. So, we're enhancing patrols over there as well. Kind of circling back around to the speeding issues that we've been having. Donna, Gary and I spoke recently about the possibility of maybe purchasing a couple more small digital speed signs to put out in known trouble spots in, in the village. Right now, we have a handful of them, and we do a pretty good job, but you hate to take them off the main roads where your main issues are at. And it's, it's also tough. It takes at least two people to move those devices, because they're, they're heavier than what they look. I did some research and checked with a couple of vendors, and the information I got, that was pretty surprising. I almost feel like it would be better financially speaking to go ahead and go with the same signs we have now to collect all the data. We're only about a thousand dollars short per sign in the two. So, you can get two signs for five thousand dollars through the company we've been using, or you can get one small sign for about thirty-five hundred dollars.
What's, what's the difference between the two?
The smallest, the, the smaller signs are obviously smaller in nature. They're, they're easier to mount up in, in more places. The problem is, they don't keep any kind of data. They, the batteries are a lot worse. They don't have the nice solar panels on them. And again, it's, to me, I think financially speaking, is much better option to, to look at the signs like we have now. And that's something you guys can speak of, about at your next work session.
Did you save two of those for five thousand?
Yeah, we can get, that's, that's what were there were last time we bought them. Now, they may be a little more now, because I didn't check into those again, because I was trying to, to price out some smaller units. But because we bought so much from those guys, they'll, they'll work with us on those. The only other thing I have to pass on, and again, this is just for work session purposes next week or whenever you have it. Officer Michael Amoski has been with us over a year now. He brings in over twelve years of law enforcement experience, has done an absolute phenomenal job with us, has been there on days he's supposed to be off. Just a, a great employee, and I would like to look and promote him to the position of sergeant. He has all the schools, he has the time, and he's a right fit for that position. So, with that being said, if you could put that on your agenda to make a talk salary and what you guys think you want to do, obviously, I'd be glad to come in and talk and explain more as to what it entails and kind of work with you guys on that. But if you could add that to your work session, uh, session, uh, agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Do we have, do we have a job description for sergeant versus patrol?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Outside of that, that's about all I've got to pass on. Mind if I have any questions?
I do. The speed signs, if we were to buy more, would there be more of a discount? Say, if we were to buy four or six or whatever?
They're, they are really good about working with us. I know the last time we talked to them, they moved some numbers around for us to make them work on that grant. So, like I said, with us being return customers and their past history, I think they will. I can't speak for them, but I have no reason that they wouldn't.
Okay.
So, I think, I think, like I said, if we call them and let them know what we're looking for, they'll probably work with us.
Okay, doesn't hurt to ask.
It, it does, by any means.
Right, because I would think that, you know, if, if it helps and if it makes a difference, we should, we should invest the money in it.
Yes, ma'am. And I, and I do believe they help, I do. You can look at most of the numbers, and the problem is, if you leave them in one spot for too long, then like everything else, it becomes just a blur, they don't pay attention to it. So, having the ability to leave main ones up at the entrances to the village, yet kind of throw a surprise in there every once in a while, really gets your attention, moving them to different places, and you, you kind of tie your hands with what we've got. Don't get me wrong, what we've got is great. But when you're trying to do a speed study, that it gets hot up for months at a time, and then you really have nothing.
Right.
And everybody in here, everybody feels deserved, so speed sign from their house, if there's an issue, everybody would like to have it out there. And I'd like to give them that opportunity.
Or what happens in South Shamrock is they speed up to see how fast they can go.
Well, the good thing is, we can, that, that sign has a feature that it'll blackout once it gets to a certain point. So, to keep people from wanting to do that.
What, what would be?
I was going to say, I wonder how fast that is.
Good. What would be the optimal number of signs? If you could have whatever you want?
Can I pick on that a few?
Yeah.
Take it to and get back with you?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you did that, because you're going to think about it.
Yeah, I'd like to give you a few days to think about that.
No, please do.
And get it priced accordingly.
I will, I will, no problem.
Enter, enter a minute.
Yeah, I just, so I just want to say thank you to the officers for doing the well site. Again, I know that that's something that's added to their workload already, and I really do appreciate it. Just run into them a couple different times, and I really appreciate hearing that, that they're out there checking on that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
A question on your reports on speed. What, uh, what's the time period on this one with eighteen hundred and forty-one cars?
That is, the total is actually, I don't know why it's, it's like that. Apparently, more people turn on Eagle Drive. But anyway, it's the same timeframe that the, the other one is.
That's quite, quite a difference in number of cars.
It is. The, the only thing I think of is you have more cars coming in and then turning on Eagle to go around versus cars that are coming straight over. Because you've got a, you've got a difference of, of roughly five thousand vehicles in that thirty-day period. Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to go through the speed numbers again, just for the record. Eastbound traffic.
This is Woodland Circle.
Woodland Circle, eastbound traffic. Total number of vehicles was seven thousand eighteen. From fifteen to thirty miles an hour, it was sixty-eight hundred and sixteen cars. It was ninety-seven point one one percent. From thirty-one to thirty-six miles an hour, there was a hundred and eighty-six cars, two point six five percent. From thirty-seven to forty-five miles an hour, there were sixteen cars. That's, that's point two three percent. And there was one vehicle that went from between forty-six and fifty-one miles an hour. So, that's the data on the eastbound. Westbound traffic, there was a total of twenty-one hundred and twenty-two cars. From fifteen to thirty miles an hour, there was eighteen hundred and forty-one cars. So, that's eighty-six point seven six percent. From thirty-one to thirty-six miles an hour, there was two hundred and fifty-two cars, which is eleven point eight eight percent. From thirty-seven to forty-five, there were twenty-nine cars, which is one point three seven percent. And there was nothing over that. So, there, that's the complete data on that. And that's all I have.
You want to talk about this at all?
Uh, that's coming up later.
Oh, you're good, okay. Any other questions for, uh? Okay, next up, water department, Councilwoman Nelson.
Yep. Yesterday, yesterday you received word that we have a clean radium report for our new well. So, that is a significant hurdle. The next step of the process is they take that report, and then they'll be able to give us what the output will be, and that should be tomorrow or the next day, hopefully.
What do you mean output?
In other words, so what they do is, based on their, remember that crazy PowerPoint I did? They have all those layers, and then once, once they determine which one has the largest area that they can suck in, now that they know that there's no other areas that they need to worry about the radium level, that means that they have the full spectrum to pull from. And so, we should get that, that, that hopefully tomorrow, but please don't poke your breath. I know you won't.
Just a, just a reminder to the council that we had set a letter of intent to SAGMA
Yeah, we did.
that we will, within thirty days of getting that final approval, purchase that property.
But we have, the final, which is the one you're talking about, right?
We're still waiting for that, yeah. As soon as it comes in, we've got thirty days, and we should buy the property.
Did they agree to that? Did they sign the agreement?
I sent it to them, and they haven't responded.
Okay.
Well, we don't really know.
Yeah, we know. I mean, Lydia and I talked about it. She's, they're representatives, and she's fine with it.
Okay, cool.
And she just keeps calling me like every other day.
Well, win-win, right?
We're still doing it, right? Yeah, we're still doing it.
And then, reference the storm that we had that knocked out some of the components up there by the water tower. The components came in yesterday, should be installed tomorrow. We should be back up and running by the end of this week, when everybody can go.
Any questions? Gary? Well, maybe next up, then it would be me, and I only have just one mention. There was concern about the codification of our orders that had been accomplished. So, it should be updated on this, on this list.
What's that preference?
That you should have gotten the codification, all the changes.
Oh, yeah, that was what you put in the book.
Yep. Got it in the book.
That was supplement eight.
Yep. Supplement eight. Well, that's good to know. Okay, new business. Just want to lead off and make sure that the council is in agreement that we are not going to have a forum for candidates. As we talked about that, we've got a lot of questions, and so I wanted to confirm that we are going to stay with our decision.
I'm not, I'm not voting on that, except you guys, since I'm running.
I have no change in my.
Okay. Neither.
Okay.
And I understand, we did have one person that sent in a question.
Yes.
There are, there are questions that have been answered on the website, correct?
One person sent in another question.
I see.
And both on the website, if you have any questions, send them to Lisa, and we'll put them on the website, and we'll get that.
So, there was one person.
I see.
Yep. So, anybody that has any questions they want candidates to answer, send it in. Pass that on. Okay. Next up is the assignment of long-range plan tasks to the village council members. And that's Councilwoman Rich.
Yes, what I'd like to set up on our, and we talked about this as far as our long-range plan, saying that we wanted to assign these, these action items to positions on the council.
Correct.
And if people change, really doesn't matter, the position, the task goes along with the position. So, I'd like to add that, and I want everyone to kind of go through that, probably before our work session, so we all can, you know, have a, a good discussion about what you're volunteering for, or what you want, think should be assigned to someone.
At the work session later this month?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's, it's something that, it's, it could be that some people really want to be involved in certain things. And there's some things that maybe two people could do together versus just one. Okay?
Next up. New administrative position, that job description.
Yes, that's also something I'm going to be working on.
I have a draft of one.
Okay, I do too.
Okay.
And any, any, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to send out a draft, or if you can send me yours, and I'll build on that. And then I can send it out, people can add stuff to it, and then we can talk about that in our work session. But I'd really like to get that finalized sooner rather than later. And just, those are just two things that I'm going to be working on in the next two weeks, or that we should be working on as a group.
Any questions about that? Pedestrian crossing.
Well, you know, we do have a speeding problem going down a hill on Woodland Circle. And Mayor Bordeaux brought up the pedestrian crossing situation that they have in front of the Catholic Church in Heimer. So, I checked out the signs that would be placed in the middle of the intersection plus pedestrian, pedestrian painting across the intersection from Eagle over to the street across, the intersection. The sign each with the middle of the street plus two signs, one in the, before each direction, plus painting the intersection itself, it costs roughly twelve hundred dollars to do that. It will work. I had Lieutenant Garner out with me. It will work. There's always some disadvantages. People may run into the sign, knock it over, which, it won't break it, but somebody's going to have to replace the sign if somebody hits it, which would probably be the police department.
Well, we don't, we wouldn't know who hit it anyway.
No, no, somebody's got to put it back up, but, uh, like I said, it's going to cost about twelve hundred dollars. There's a lot of time. Is it going to slow the traffic down? We don't know. It should, but it may not, so.
Well, I, I have a question. I mean, I know you said we have a speeding problem. I kind of challenge the fact that if ninety, I don't know the exact percent, but if
Ninety-seven point one one.
Are going under thirty-five miles an hour.
Under thirty.
Under thirty.
Thirty-one.
I, I don't really classify that as a speeding problem. That's just my opinion. That's my only comment. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but.
Well, I think it's, we have a perceived problem. And a perceived problem is a real problem for somebody. And if we're getting a lot of traffic, and we are seeing a lot of traffic on Woodland Circle, and we'll see more, anything we can do to control that should be worth a try.
Well, west, westbound is always more speedy because they're gonna accelerate across the hill.
Up the hill.
So, and that's still eighty-six point seven six percent. They're, they're in compliance, about twelve percent are.
Yeah, and that twelve percent are doing thirty-five miles an hour.
They could be, oh, they could be doing thirty-two.
You're right. You're right.
Somewhere near there.
Right.
Thirty-one to thirty-six.
What's it, what that sign does is whether you, you say it or not, it, it makes you slow down just because the road appears to be narrower.
So they're gonna have to go around. I mean, it's, it's a room to get by, but they're gonna have to.
That's a slow down.
Well, then my question is, is where else are we going to be requested or required to put these?
Now, that's the only one that's been a major problem.
Well, right.
That gets more. We have to be open to work.
We could, I'm sorry, Don, are you saying, um, both of the, the sign itself, if I'm, this is, this is the dollars amount here.
Yeah.
This sign is how much?
It's two, uh, two hundred dollars plus there's two other signs. If you look through the page, there's a couple of different, uh, signs we can get to supplement that. Yeah, we gotta have two of those other, there's two pages.
This is the one you're talking about.
Yeah, that would be one of the three.
This is the one that goes in the road, right?
Yes.
And, and we could do just that?
Yeah, I mean, we could do just that, but you almost should have some other backup signs to warn people that there is company. But anyway, all I think is about three hundred dollars.
So the big cost would be if we did, we have to paint the crosswalk.
Yeah, if we paint the crosswalk, that's gonna be like eight hundred dollars to paint that. But does it have to paint the cross?
Huh?
Yeah, I think you do.
I think you probably should.
Cause it says within crosswalk.
You gotta, you gotta have a guided area there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, that's something to think about.
Well, I, I guess maybe, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate here, cause I've been up and down that road many times. And when you're coming down Woodland Circle, you are at the top of the hill coming down, you can see, one of the two roads, Pine Ridge and Eagle. You can see those roads from the top and you can plainly see that there's no one there walking across the crosswalk.
And it could be a bicycle coming. There could be a bicycle coming today, slow down and hit the bikes.
Who hits the bike?
Coming down. And just because, again, the part of this rationale is, you see it, it plugs up the road. So it makes you, whether or not you see a, somebody crossing, it makes you slow down just because you've got to fit through that opening. That's, I think that's the basic purpose of it.
Can I, can I let my comment about this whole sign thing? I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to remark.
Shh. Not until after, right?
We'll do it afterward. We'll do it after.
Okay, I'll just touch base with you on some concerns I have.
We'll take this one.
I'll just be into the meeting.
Yeah, get into the meeting, we'll have it right in.
But that's just my concern, is that they can literally see no one's there.
Any other comments? We can take this up to work.
Yep.
Next up, Richmond Road pedestrian and bike safety.
So, um, I've pretty much, I've, I've given you a document, a two-page document based on what the chief of rooted, uh, myself and the chief and, uh, Don met initially to discuss some concerns about Richmond Road, uh, with the increase of pedestrians and bicycles walking on both sides of those roads. And, uh, this is something that I've kind of taken on as, as kind of a project myself cause I live there, I have to use that road. And, uh, so had discussions with the chief and Don and, uh, I summarized those in that document. I'd like to, uh, keep this as a project. I'd like to brief the council and, and ask if anybody else would like to join in this, specifically Janet, if you're interested. But it's something that I feel strongly about in terms of the, the safety concerns of the increase in pedestrians that are walking back and forth on that road. The challenge, as Janet has told me, is gonna be the Department of, the, the state, it's a state road. But I think that we can do some things, uh, and I'd like to try to do some things and I'd like to, as part of our working session, uh, give a briefing on that and then get the council's input on, on where I would like to pursue. So this is, it will be a, um, working session item.
Okay. I'll bring up my comments then.
Second issue is, uh, the salary increase for Jesse. Jesse has completed his water certification, uh, amongst other things, and I'd like to present that rationale and, uh, have a discussion, uh, on a request for salary increase or, uh, pay increase for Jesse. Again, another work session.
Did we allocate that later in the year?
No.
You did not?
No, we have not.
This is totally separate than, than that.
Can we talk about mid-year review?
Not, not this year. We said we would wait till towards the end of the year, yes.
Yeah, mid-year. Yeah, mid.
Mid fiscal year, yes. But I think that's in, what Gary's speaking of is a.
A conditional?
Yes.
Yes, separate.
Because ours would be one. What we're talking about is a one-time, a month.
Yep.
That's all I have. So both of those work session agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does, uh, anybody have any comments?
No.
Okay, old business. Uh, I have a resolution, uh, by the resolution R twenty-three dash zero seven, which is a resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding Foxfire Village. And, uh, this is something we need to approve and I'll read it to you if you'd like. Whereas it recommends proper transportation system to support movement within and through the Sand Hills MPO, organizing as highly desirable element of comprehensive plan for orderly growth and development of the area. And whereas there are non-governmental jurisdictions within the Sand Hills urbanized area, we should authorize implementation and regulatory responsibilities for transportation by North Carolina general statutes. And whereas it is desirable that coordinated, comprehensive, and cooperative transportation planning processes be maintained in the Sand Hills urbanized area to ensure that the transportation system is maintained on an efficient and economical basis commensurate with public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas a memorandum of understanding between the town of Aberdeen, village of Foxfire, county of Moore, town of Pine Bluff, village of Pinehurst, town of Southern Pines, town of Taylortown, village of Whispering Pines, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation has entered into this, sets forth the responsibilities and working arrangements for maintaining a continued, continuing comprehensive and cooperative transportation plan, process. And it will now therefore be resolved by the village council of Foxfire. That's a memorandum of understanding between the town of Aberdeen, village of Foxfire, county of Moore, town of Pine Bluff, village of Pine, Pinehurst, town of Southern Pines, town of Taylortown, village of Whispering Pines, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation be approved. And the Foxfire Village Mayor and the village clerk are hereby directed to enter into and execute the memorandum of understanding adopted by the Foxfire Village Council in regular session on the tenth day of October twenty-third. Any, anybody have any questions about the resolution?
No.
Tell me what that, you know, what comes down to.
Yep.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept that resolution.
I'm making a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That resolution is passed.
Don, very quickly on this resolution, and I know we are in the, the MPO, um, did they decide how voting was supposed to go?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, there was a big.
Oh, yes.
It's a kerfuffle about that.
And basically.
So it is what it was originally proposed.
It was originally, yeah, it was originally proposed. Yeah, we tried to get it changed and that wasn't gonna work.
Right.
And since we were not an original signer to this, if we did not adopt the MOU, we would be excluded. We didn't want that to happen. So what it, what it basically means, uh, is that on a standard vote on, on a project, whatever it might be, each of the communities, uh, listed here have one vote. If there are two dissenting votes on, on this, two of the nine, then it'll go to a weighted vote. And a weighted vote is based on basically the, uh, the population. So Pinehurst and Southern Pines get three votes, Aberdeen gets two, the county gets two, Whispering Pines, Taylortown, Foxfire, Pine Bluff, and Foxfire are getting one vote.
Yep. So they did change it a little, cause it was if it wasn't unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous, but now it has to be two.
Now it's two.
It has to be two.
So they changed it a little.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's where, that's where we stand. And we will communicate that to NC DOT tomorrow and we can move on that. We have another meeting coming up.
Okay.
To go with that. Okay. Any questions? Status of planning and zoning board recommendation, I guess we just wanna try to get an update. Mary, if we could.
What kind of update would you like?
You tell us all of the things we mentioned this afternoon, that we wanted to make sure we were including all of the things that we wanted that the TMZ board had brought to us. So we have one open hearing that we can go through all of these changes.
Okay.
So I know we had the municipalities.
We have.
Changing that to the, uh.
We have a recommendation to form the municipal district.
Correct.
We have a recommendation to establish two new subdivisions, family, don't trip, Mary, family and limited.
Mm-hmm.
We have a recommendation, um, to increase the amount of accessory building square footage in lots less than one acre.
That's it.
I think that's it.
When are we gonna get, though? Do we have all of that?
You guys have had it for several weeks.
Yeah, the one change that, um, Tasha brought, that there was a question we talked about today.
Right, and that key, when I forward on all that stuff, that was included. I mean, we can talk about that if you want.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was a sentence.
There's a, there's a sentence in applicability.
Yeah.
When you, when you talk about limited and family subdivisions, we need to exempt them from the normal regulations required first, like, we don't wanna make those minor subdivisions. That's not.
Right.
We, I would exempt those, um, and the only place I could find to put it was in twenty-one, hold on a second.
Oh, with the.
Yeah.
I think it was the way it was worded.
It is, it probably, yeah, it probably, the wording probably could.
Yeah, no.
I'm not a word genius. Yeah, um.
But it has everything else.
Yeah, you have everything else. But that, that sentence in there is important, though, because otherwise, you know, our, our subdivision regulation says that if you have divide into more than four acres, that triggers a major subdivision.
Minor subdivision.
Uh, if it's parcels less than twenty-five acres, I think it actually becomes a major subdivision, doesn't it, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't want those new subdivisions subject to that. Okay? Yeah.
Mrs. Ray, could you send me the, the written recommendations on everything?
Yeah.
Do you have those available? That way, I have them.
I'll resend them. It's no problem.
Then they've all been accepted that way. I can go ahead if, if, if the council wishes to call a public hearing.
Yeah. There were a couple of questions, though, in the draft that I sent you, and you guys made some changes. You know, we, we sent some things, like our original proposal, for, for no super good reason, was to, to make the minimum lot size in family land two acres. We've all agreed now that should be one acre.
Right.
Um, I think we stayed with the ten-year, we took a lot of our verbiage from the county.
Yeah.
Um, so I can go through and, and resend them, that's fine.
Make sure that's all updated.
And just update the stuff.
Do that.
Yeah. The one question we did have, and I think this is a attorney question, is how we define family.
No, we, we said we would go with the whatever the county is.
Yeah.
Calls it. Whatever the county says.
Okay. The counties, I'll, I'll relook at the county. The county's pretty loose. The county, the county's kinda tight, actually. I shouldn't say that. Ours actually is a little looser in definition of the county.
I thought, I thought we said we wanted to go with whatever the county is.
And that's fine. I didn't get any feedback after you guys looked at it, so if that's what you wanna go with, that's fine.
Well, there was a comment in here about, about, um, in-laws and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And, and we said it would be, it would be whatever the county says. So that's what we wanted it to say. So, cause really, you know, husbands and wives are, it's kinda the same as in-laws, technically. So.
Do you wanna align the county as what it's supposed to be?
Yeah, whenever I think there's a question, we wanted to align it with the county.
Well, and that's pretty much where we took most of our, most of our verbiage from, was from the county. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the question, the applica, it was in the applicability section.
It is in applic, it is in applicability, applicability, yeah, yeah. And if you want me to look at rewording it, that's fine, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty adamant we need to have some kind of statement in there, otherwise.
It would definitely word it, could that cut question?
I think it was number four, that, it was number four. And it says the division of a tract of sing, of, in the single ownership, whose entire area is no greater than ten acres into not more than three lots, where no street or right-of-way is involved, where the resulted lots are equal to or exceeded to the standards of the village subdivision regulations. It just seemed very confusing. I, it, the, the language was not clear.
Well, wait a minute, let me just stop down there. So in applicability, I didn't change anything except I added number six. The division of a tract into parcels for family or limited subdivisions as described in section twenty-one dash seven dash whatever you name it. That's the only thing we added. The rest of that is original language.
Well, what does, oh, you know what? You're right. It's a, the division of track into parcels, the division of track of parcels into family or limited subdivisions are described.
As described in section twenty-one.
Well, it says are, are described in section twenty-seven.
Should be as described. I'll change that. Yeah, I, the only thing we added was number six. We didn't mess with the rest of it. That Nick wrote that stuff and I'm not, I mean, we didn't mess with that. All we did was add number six.
You're right. That's what the question was. It was number six. We didn't understand what that meant.
So if I say as described?
No, I think it was, I think what Tasha was saying is, is that these things only, these limited subdivisions are only applicable to family subdivisions.
No. Family and limited are two separate things. Limited subdivision allows people who have seven acres to nine point nine nine acres to subdivide, okay?
Right, and we said we wanted it into two equal pieces, not, um.
Well, that's okay. I thought you guys decided the other way around. We were gonna give them two options, one, one, five, and the remainder, or into two equal pieces, because I don't know all that land. And so we were concerned that we didn't wanna accidentally, um, not punish, that's not the right word, but have a negative impact on those lot sizes because they couldn't subdivide. on those lot sizes because they couldn't subdivide.
Well, I think the way we, I actually, no, what we did say is one lot must be five acres.
And that's fine.
And that's the only choice we wanted to give them, because if one lot had to be five.
That's totally fine, then the landowner, you know, can figure out, well, I want to do it in cap. Well, the only, I kind of disagree, because if you have seven acres, the reason we put that split in there was because if you have seven acres, from a financial standpoint, you're gonna do way better if you have a three and a half and a three and a half, three and a half, than if you have a five and a two.
But we're watering down, we're already watering down the five acre minimum that we intended. I think that's, I think that's the way we were looking at it, is that we said we wanted five acre minimums, and now we're saying, meh, maybe we don't.
Well, here's the thing, there are some rumbles that the county, they're not very happy about us doing RA five, and I'm gonna straighten that out later this week. But we do need to be careful, though, that in that seven to ten, or seven point nine-nine, that we don't negatively impact those property owners, that's nineteen lots, it's not a tremendous number of lots. And so, that's why we put the half in there, because if you have an eight and you split into two fours, if you have a nine and you go four and a half and four and a half, that's financially advantageous to the landowner.
But the thing is, too, as an argument, just to play devil's advocate, this land, within three years, I believe it's three years, can be subdivided. Again.
No.
Family, a family member can subdivide.
Well, right, but that, but that would be anywhere, I mean.
No, I know, but now we're saying, okay, now you can subdivide a smaller piece into now equal pieces, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, I don't understand, if you have family land, okay, you're gonna have the right to gift that to your family, minimum one acre lot.
Right, right. But what if they, what if they give them a seven acre lot? And then now they're gonna subdivide it, so you're saying they can subdivide it no matter what if it's going to a family member?
Yeah, and here's the thing, you guys, you know what, the county does about three of those a year. We might do one every three years. We, this is not something where we're gonna do a lot of these things. I mean, I don't.
I think, I still think the council decided to keep it, at least one of these lots was five acres. Isn't that what we decided in our last review?
Well, that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to be absolutely certain that when we do RA five, well, not we've done RA five, but when we do the family and limited, that we have taken into consideration the financial impact for pretty much every single person who owns property in the ETJ. And so, that was the only reason we came back and put in the even split in the seven to ten, seven to nine-nine. And if you, I mean, if you guys want to change it, that's fine, I just want you to understand what our reasoning was when we did it.
No, I think we understood it.
It was lots of discussion.
Because you could take a nine acre piece, divide it into seven and two, turn it around and sell it, and they can divide into five and two.
Right, which we're diluting our whole point of going through RA five, is the point. I guess, why did we go through RA five if we're now saying, well, people can subdivide into even, now they can just subdivide into smaller and smaller?
They can't, but Janice, they can't.
You just said that they can.
If, but if somebody has a seven acre piece, if you have nine acres, and someone divides it once into seven and two, and then sells the seven, that person can divide into five and two.
Right.
And you're not, you're not gonna get away from that, I mean, I don't.
Well, no, if we say five acre minimum, then a nine acre would have to be a five or more.
Okay, so, okay.
Is that what we said for families?
No, this is for families, this is separate, families are different.
Yeah, you're using the terms back and forth.
No, I know. No, this, families are still.
Still could do what?
Yeah. Limited applies to lots of seven acres to nine point nine-nine acres.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. Initially, I was confused, because I thought you were talking about the family, and I was like, wait a minute, I don't really know what we're talking about.
Right, I confused it a little bit too upfront, but no, limited is different from family, limited is these.
Limited was specifically done for those guys in that, where they can't really go into two fives, they can't, and we need to be sure that we don't unduly put a financial glitch in their ability to sell.
Yeah, and I guess that, I do remember those conversations on the limited, and I agree, I haven't changed my stance on that.
Okay, so we just are gonna go with have to have, one of them has to be five acres, that's fine.
Right.
I have one other update for you. I can hear it now, if you're in, it doesn't, whichever you prefer. We got a request for a telecom tower, right? And it's not an allowable use. It's not in the appendix. So, before I send planning and zoning on a drill, I just need to know, and it's not a vote, I'm asking you to vote on it, but I, I mean, then we go back through and once, if we make it an allowable use, that only allows us to evaluate it, it doesn't mean we're gonna approve it, but it's not an allowable use right now.
And the, the area that I had the phone call that was in the village.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in RE.
It's real estate.
Real estate, but it's within Woodland's, well, yeah, Foxfire Road.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem is, we don't have it under allowable uses, but we've got all kinds of information on it.
Well, here's the, okay, so, at the last planning and zoning meeting, I said, you know, now we need to go back and we need to look at special use permits, and that we're getting ready to strip that pretty much just to take that stuff out. But I'm pretty, I mean, if it's not an allowable use in our appendix, I can stand right there.
Well, we've gone down this road before, and if it's not in the appendix.
Yeah, it's not permitted.
It's not permitted.
Yeah.
At this point.
Okay, so, that's which, I'm gonna call the nice lady in telecoms. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, public comment period.
I think we're not done.
You're not done?
No.
Uh-oh. You tried to what, you tried to what?
No, 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 we have to make a recommendation regarding the rezoning to the municipal district. Are we going to accept it or not?
That's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
But we, we haven't really, I don't think we reviewed that in any detail. We talked about it, but I don't think we've reviewed, I don't think I've reviewed the written, I don't think so, I just can't remember, do you guys remember it?
We got it a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we had some questions about it.
Right.
I had some questions, of course.
We got a public hearing to vote on that.
That's why, if you accept the recommendation and move forward, then we'd figure out a date for the public hearing for everything, and that's where I was.
And we can still change it.
So, now in public hearing. So, now we can decide whether we want to go along with the recommendation or not.
Well, we can, right, consider it, what we're saying is we're gonna consider it.
And I'm saying, I don't think we need to do that.
Oh, you don't think we need to do a separate zoning?
No.
Okay.
And I, I, because I think what we can do is, any of the village-owned properties or parcels would be exempt from the requirements and restrictions, and we can change the ordinances for those municipal properties if we needed to. So, why have to go through the whole process of creating a new district if we can take, let's say, somebody wanted a fence.
Right.
On a municipal building, we can change the ordinance for that building. Can we not?
No, you can.
The fencing ordinance, you could put, you could put something there that, you know, with the exception of village-owned properties are exempt from this or whatever. You could put something, but that's ordinance change, it still is a public hearing.
Yeah, and that's a lot of.
What I'm just saying, instead of creating a whole new district.
And then having to do a zoning.
I'm gonna put that on the agenda for.
Well, I think maybe we should, maybe we should talk to our attorney on which way to go, I mean, is it better to do ordinance changes for, because there's not a lot of municipal-owned property, let's face it. A zoning district versus ordinance change? I mean, if we could do it either way, I think the ordinance changes are better. But let's ask the question, unless someone knows the answer, I don't know, but.
I don't know.
I don't have the answer.
Lisa, will you check into that?
I will.
Thank you. I will say this, most other villages have some kind of special district for their property that is owned by the town, we looked at them.
Okay, you're gonna talk about?
Yes, I will contact when I got that.
Okay. All right, now we can go to public comment period for anything that was listed on the agenda. Do you have any comments or questions?
I have just a question.
What's it?
It's not, not on the agenda.
Doesn't that have to be on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda, but you can.
It says for, listen, on the agenda.
Oh, I see that, but I have a question.
Was it something we talked about during the meeting?
No, but I was told that it was gonna be discussed tonight, that was one reason I came, but it's about the lot, not the lot necessarily, that's across the street from me, but the porta potty. I'm tired of seeing that porta potty, and I think it was March when they put it there, I've only seen one person use it.
Are you gonna hang until the end of the meeting, and I'll, I'll reach out to you?
All right, bye.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.